Good evening. This is the December 27, 2023 meeting, Blue Castle's only Board of Appeals. Before we begin tonight, I'd like to take a moment to thank Howard Dubs for his 10 years of service to the Board. Howard will be leaving us, leaving the Board that after tonight's meeting, this is his last meeting, unfortunately. Through the years, Howard has always been fair, judged every case on its own merits. His wisdom has helped us all make reasonable and just decisions. We thank him again, wish him all the best in the future endeavors. With that, we shall begin.
So we're extensions, Parac?
Yeah.
Parac, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I'm Ken Anderson with Grand Off Arc Rigs. I'm representing 76 Anandale, the Paracs. And thank you again, Mr. Dubs, for your duty. We request a, respectfully request an extension, another extension. We had had one extension because it took a while to get pricing. And then we got pricing, and then we had to do a lot of value engineering. And so now we've submitted all the revised drawings. All the numbers are very similar. We just reduced things, honestly, that you don't like see. But we're asking for another extension, and we're definitely going to start within the next couple of months.
How long would extension do you need?
I mean, to be safe, I would say till spring, so six months.
Six months to start?
Yeah, I mean, we'll be under that. I mean, we're trying to start in January, but it's gonna be, you know, it's a lot of excavation and site work, so we don't want to really make a mess.
I don't have a problem with six months if there's anybody else does.
No.
Okay. I move we grant the six-month extension for the break case.
I second the motion.
Chairman Giordina?
Hi.
Howard Dubs?
Aye.
Mike Nolan?
Aye.
Ron Genzeg?
Aye.
Warren Gottlieb?
Aye.
You have your extension, good luck.
Thanks very much, have a good night.
Yates, for an extension?
Did you invite Buddy here for that?
I think I saw him on the screen earlier.
Sorry, did you say Yates?
Yates.
Hi, um, yes, I'd like to request an extension for 106th Ward of the Road. We are in the final stages of obtaining a building permit. There was just some revised site work by the engineering department that needed to take place.
And how long do you see you need your extension for?
Six months.
Is that reasonable, Tom? Our building department thinks you could do it quicker.
Uh, yeah, just the last one was six months.
I'm gonna make, I'm gonna make a motion that we grant you a three-month extension.
Sure.
With the provision that if something untoward happens, you can always come back and see us again. We'd be happy to see you. So we'll make the motion for three months.
I second the motion.
Chairman Giordina?
Hi.
Howard Dubs?
Aye.
Mike Nolan?
Aye.
Ron Genzeg?
Aye.
Warren Gottlieb?
Aye.
Uh, next extension is Cook.
He's not going to be present tonight at the meeting, which is why he submitted a detail letter in his work application, so he does.
Which one was his?
Two Ryder.
Oh, two riders. He wants eight months for this construction. Tom, is this, is this something really difficult going on there? He's looking for eight months.
Coordination and financial, six months should be more than adequate.
Okay. So rather than the eight months requested, I'll make a motion that we grant a six-month extension on this application.
I second the motion.
Chairman Giordina?
Hi.
Howard Dubs?
Aye.
Mike Nolan?
Aye.
Ron Genzeg?
Aye.
Warren Gottlieb?
Aye.
This next one, Howard, uh...
So were you gonna bypass Heikel?
He, he's actually on the screen now.
He's, he's in?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
So, uh, the application for Martin, uh, Heikel?
Yes, hi. Can you hear me okay? I just, uh, I'm going to be in person, but I just couldn't find it totally yesterday, so I'm just kind of, and then after this, I'll look back at it.
Okay, so, um...
Can I make a little comments to start, or?
Yeah, did you, uh, I didn't hear you state your name. Can you state your name for the record?
Yeah, Martin Heikel.
And what is it that you seek?
Uh, looking for setbacks, variances for the home that, uh, that I remember any right in the home. And I don't, I don't know if I can draw your attention to the first page, which is a survey. And I just want to draw your attention to two things if I could. On the back side of this house where it says one story, you see that there's a, there's a little corner, uh, like a little, uh, cutout of that corner in the first story?
Right.
And it's, and it reads slab, that's what's there. We just wanted to square that, uh, that part of that one story, which is a, it's, uh, it's about three feet by eight and a half feet, because this is where they cornered off. The, the other thing is, uh, if you look at the front, uh, if you can't even get out, but there's some steps there to the front door. And we're asking that we can make that those steps, uh, will say a little bit bigger. Four, four by six and a half. So those would be the two, uh, areas impacting footprint of that house. Um, and, uh, if we, when we run out of the count, we could, uh, and then, well, let me, if I can, I'll just keep walking through this stuff at first. The next thing, which is proposed first plan, it is showing that a little corner section that we want to square off at the back of the house, and then a portico in the front of the house. Now, the, the two other, uh, things are, we're, we would like to expand the, there's a, uh, the back side of the roof with a very steep pitch, and we want to, uh, provide a door off at the back of the roof. Uh, so we're not changing the footprint of the house so much, but we are changing the, the roof so that that heated area now is more livable, uh, where you can sort of stand up and get some windows facing the back of the house. Probably that's the thing to show you here would be the proposed heat domination. Maybe we could sort of add, so, uh, we can get it in. So we, you can see off the, uh, it would be on the left side of the back of the house. We'll see there a proposed dormer off at the back of the roof there. Um, and then there's a dormer in the front of the house that we'd like to extend out four feet. That bedroom in the front is eight feet and a half wide, that bedroom. So we want to expand it out, extend it out a bit, it's a little livable. And then the back of the house, the dormer there, it just adds a living space to the back side of the house. So these, these are the, uh, so the issue I have is that we are zoned for a half acre. I'm surprised, actually. Because this lot is 150 feet long by 50 feet wide. Uh, it's, uh, and in fact, all the properties on this side of the road are the same size, 50 feet wide, 100 feet long, which is substantially less than a quarter acre. Uh, in fact, it's only 68% of quarter acre, so it's, it's not even close to a quarter acre. So the, the side of the street are all the same sized lots, and the grass around by like to both, both sides of the street going out. I don't know how many houses it affects, but, so what I had to do is with all the calculations, is use half acre calculation when we're substantial less than a quarter acre, as all the neighbor houses are less than a quarter acre. So just to give you an example, with half acres, where, um, the side setbacks combined to 50 feet, while the lot is 50 feet. And so like today's standard, we would not be able to put a flagpole in the center of the property, technically, because it's zoned at half acre. If it were a quarter acre, we could build something, but... So the calculations I have here, uh, are based on the town half acre, which puts this, um, you know, non-conforming in, you know, in, 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 in two or three areas. So, uh, I'm, I'm seeking approval from you folks, uh, to add 27 square feet to the back of that house in terms of the footprint, uh, a small portico in front of that house. And then it would be a, to sort of, to the footprint of the house. And then, and then it adds some sort of living space in the home. Uh, one of the three key metrics you have, uh, building coverage, we actually, for some reason, I don't know, we need to actually make that, uh, we comply by, by half acre zoning. And then the two, two, uh, parameters we do not, uh, make, achieve half acre zoning. And by the way, for example, if we could look at quarter acre ratio, um, if we were quarter acre zone, we would actually see the difference. So, um, anyway, I, I just wanted to sort of provide that as a backdrop. Uh, we're not doing much of this home, except vastly improving the appearance of it. I don't think it's any photographed as near dilapidated looking right now, and I want to really make it look very nice. The architectural reward, light actually, we're doing very much. So, um, I guess that's, do you have any questions?
Somebody on the board have any comments about this one?
I have a question. So the total amount of feet you're adding, the square footage you're adding to the house is, is it 53?
Oh, 50, uh, you mean that the 27 square feet off of the back and then the portico?
Yeah.
Yeah, correct. That would be the footprint square footage, 54 square feet. And, and inside the house, because we're putting dormers and we're taking that up, um, let's put it this way, total, we're taking out 85 square feet, housewide, square footage, living space. So it's very red, the dimensions, really. Um, and then the portico is this, you know, that's just obviously either front entry, um, and we're replacing a whole lot, really dilapidated one, and in the back, it's really just square off of that tiny little corner. I don't think it's a point that it would be, uh, rather important. I did have, because I could ask a question, and I, and I'm wondering if, you know, if it's, uh, if we are all sort of quarter acre area, if this is something that could be sort of available in the future for mapping purposes, I just, because I know this would affect probably a couple of dozen owners around this area. If, if there's ever a reassessment made to that zoning land.
A reassessment for, for what purpose? I'm sorry.
Uh, to, to re, to rezone it as quarter acre, since all the properties are less than a quarter acre.
You'd have to petition the town board for that. The reason that, the reason that it was made half acre, uh, is hidden somewhere in the town records. I couldn't tell you why. Uh, you're not the only people in town that have a conflict with that, because our zoning code was updated a few years ago, and there are other properties that, that, uh, we call legally existing nonconforming that don't comply. Uh, and we're sympathetic to that, we understand where you're coming from. Uh, we, there's nothing that we at this board can do for you on that regard.
Would that be, would that be helpful, too? Should I petition this, this decision?
Um, I don't, I don't, I personally, I don't think it's gonna help you any, I don't think you're gonna get far. I think because the zoning code has been updated, like I say, and this is what the board wants to see. Your house being there predating the code, uh, does not create a situation where you have to make large changes to meet the new code because you're there. I, I don't see a reason unless you have...
Oh, yeah, no, I mean, actually, for personal reasons, it wouldn't be any reason.
No.
I just, when I spotted that, I see, and I see there are some on the map that are quarter acre zoning.
Yeah.
And it's sort of, or less, substantially less than quarter acre, or this all, maybe it was an error, perhaps.
No, no, you're not unique, you're, they're around. We've, we'll have, we'll deal with it.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Any other comments from the board? Is there anybody in the audience or on Zoom that would like to, uh, address this application?
No hands are raised.
Nobody, okay. In that case, I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing.
I second the motion.
Chairman Giordina?
Hi.
Howard Dubs?
Aye.
Mike Nolan?
Aye.
Ron Genzeg?
Aye.
Warren Gottlieb?
Aye.
Okay, I'll make a motion on this one.
I think, can I, uh, I'm just...
You're not finished yet.
Can I add one question? I'm wondering, I just...
Oh, sure, yeah, go ahead.
Uh, what's, what's the next step now that you approve it?
We haven't approved your application yet. Our next step is to, to propose the, the application, whether it'll be approved or denied, depends on the board. And if you're approved, you go ahead and do what you're gonna do. If you're denied, you have the right to appeal that, uh...
Oh, okay. So you don't make that decision if it's approved or not today?
We will make that right now.
Oh, okay.
Okay?
Yep. Gotta vote first.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do the, I'm gonna do the motion for you, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote. I'm gonna make a motion that we approve your application, if that eases your mind a little bit. Okay, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the application, uh, the Mary Keegan Irrevocable Trust uh, for the following variances, I'll try to get them all, if I miss any. Uh, at the front portico, a variance of 14 feet is needed, uh, to, uh, improve the steps there. And, and the front portico, that's, that's going to be a side, front yard variance. It also needs a side yard variance of eight feet for the same steps. And it also needs a, why do we have three front yards here? Oh, I see. It also needs a combination of side yard variance of seven feet, because you can't add up to the required 50 feet. Uh, at the rear lower addition, uh, the required side yard is, side yard is 20 feet. Uh, the proposed side yards is five feet, requested variance is 15 feet. Rear lower addition, the required combination side yard setback is 50 feet. The proposed combination side yard setback is 27, which means it needs a 23-foot variance. And at the second story, the required side yard setback is 20, proposed side yard setback is five, we requested variance is 15 feet. Second story addition, we need a, uh, side yard setback of 50 feet, and the combined side yard is 27 feet, so you need a 23-foot combined side yard, uh, variance. Your floor, your ratio maximum is 1629, the proposed is 1818, which means you need a 189 square foot, uh, FAR variance. The development coverage maximum allowed is 2592, you're proposing 3555, so you need a 963 square feet variance. That's a lot of variances for a little house. But, but in, in this particular case, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve those variances for the following reasons. This is an older home, a legally nonconforming and existing residence. Uh, it's on a small lot, undersized lot, it's an older home, been in the area many, many years. Here, the houses around it have been updated, many of them have been updated, this one has not. Uh, and it's due, and it needs it, it'll be good for the neighborhood. The granting of the variance will not create an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood. There is no other means other than the requested variance to achieve the desired end. Uh, while these could be considered substantial variances, the benefit to the applicant will far outweigh any detriment to the town or the neighborhood. Uh, there'll be no adverse, uh, physical effect on the environment. This is a self-created hardship, but that should not be determinative, as we had said before, the unique situation of this house being on an undersized lot, uh, in an older house, uh, would negate that. We'll need final surveys on your, uh, additions before, uh, framing. And, um, you'll need an ASBIL when you finish, right, Tom? An ASBIL survey is when completed, you'll get, you'll have six months to start and one year to complete.
I second the motion.
Chairman Giordina?
Hi.
Howard Dubs?
Aye.
Mike Nolan?
Aye.
Ron Genzeg?
Aye.
Warren Gottlieb?
Aye.
You have your variance, good luck, thank you.
Thank you very much. Can I ask you to go to the follow-up question?
Sure.
Then you said I had to do another survey?
Well, would you, you're gonna put, you're gonna put a small addition on the backside, you said?
Yeah.
And, um, you're gonna frame on top of that, are you not? Frame up a room?
No, no, it's gonna be a single level. It's just a corner, it's a three by nine, a good corner.
Need a survey on that one, Tom?
We need the ASBIL.
Just, all right, we'll, we'll skip that, our building inspector's confident, an ASBIL will do. So when you're finished with your project, we need an ASBIL drawing showing the improvements and the actual dimensions.
Oh, perfect, thank you. And then, uh, and then from now that you're approved, I still have to wait, uh, a month, is that it?
No, 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 you have to get your building permit papers in order, and as soon as you get all your papers in order from the building department, you can start.
Oh, perfect, okay.
You have to, you have to get that done within six months. We give you six months to start, just in case there's a holdup on the paperwork, and then you'll need one year to complete after that.
Okay. Thank you very much, and I do...
You just, you also have to, the minimum it's have to be adopted, too, but the decision has to file.
Right, right, yeah, right. You, you, you're, when you go to build, when you go to your building department, our building department, to get your paperwork in order, there will be a small delay until the minutes of this meeting have been adopted, which will be one month. And after that, if your paperwork is in order, you can start.
Oh, okay.
It's the way it is, we do the best we can.
Okay.
Good night, thank you for, uh, understanding. Next.
Presbyterian Church of Mount Kisco.
Do we have anybody from there?
You're on Zoom, he's on mute.
Hello?
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 Yes, hi.
Hello, everyone, uh, yes, um, I'm with River Town Solar. We are putting a, um, 132.8 kilowatt DC solar system uh, on the roof of the Presbyterian Church of Mount Kisco. Uh, there's no site work, there's no, uh, thing to the, to the use of the, of the, of the building. It's remaining in church. Uh, and there's no, uh, there's no build out on the ground at any time.
So your solar panels are gonna be on the roof?
Yes, sir.
The existing roof?
Yes, on multiple roofs. I can share a, uh, nine. One second, sorry. I can't find a share on here. Yep, there we are. So this is us. We are totally on the roof, uh, and inside the building for some electrical connection work. And really gonna set up the, uh, set up the sun with it. This is a nice sort of subsidiary project, we have all our approvals from, from Panis and to unfold.
So you're putting panels on two separate buildings, it looks like?
Yeah, the, the complex there.
Okay, all right. How many panels in total, do you know?
I can tell you right now, it is 320.
320, okay.
And what kind of certification, did you mention that you have?
Um, we're, we have an MASTA certification from, and our, um, my partner's MASTA Electric. I have an MASTA certification, my partner's MASTA Electric.
Any questions from the board on this one? Anybody in the audience or on Zoom that'd like to address this application?
No hands are raised on line.
No hands are raised, okay. I make a motion, we close the public hearing.
I second the motion.
Chairman Giordina?
Hi.
Howard Dubs?
Aye.
Mike Nolan?
Aye.
Ron Genzeg?
Aye.
Warren Gottlieb?
Aye.
Who wants to make a motion?
What?
Who wants to make a motion?
What we'll do is amend the existing...
We'll make a motion to amend the special use permit.
I move, uh, for the Presbyterian Church of Mount Kisco that we amend the existing special permit to include the installation of, uh...
320 panels.
320 solar panels.
And I would just add, in addition to the motion, that jurisdiction be retained with the zoning board, because the 2018 special permit, when they came here for their improvements, one of your final conditions in that resolution was to have the jurisdiction of the ZBA maintained for any subsequent...
We usually do.
Yeah, so I would just, in that motion, just...
And also, we, uh, we would retain, uh, jurisdiction over the, uh, any, uh, changes for, uh, or amendments to the existing special permit, or as amended.
I would just throw the five factors in there, you've gotta give them some idea why.
Okay. The granting of the, uh, variance will create no undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. For the installation of solar panels, there's no feasible method other than the variance to achieve the benefit. The variance requested is, um, it appears to be substantial, but in light of the, the, uh, being solar and, and getting off the grid, I think it's, it's, um, very positive for the church. And, uh, the, and the granting of the, uh, variance will have no adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood. This is self-created, but again, uh, it's a benefit to the applicant and, uh, to the, to the community. So for those reasons, I move that we, we grant the amendment of the special permit.
And I would just add that, I would just add also that it's consistent with the special permit requirements of the section 60 dash 430 oh two of the code.
And it's consistent under that section of the code.
I'll second that.
I second the motion.
All right, Michael second it.
Chairman Giordina?
Hi.
Howard Dubs?
Aye.
Mike Nolan?
Aye.
Ron Genzeg?
Aye.
Warren Gottlieb?
Aye.
You have your variance, thank you. Good night.
Next applicant is House.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Did you state your name for the record and tell us what it is that you seek? Pardon me?
Ludemacy, I'm the architect of the project. With me tonight is David House, he's, um, one of the owners of the house. So what we're seeking, um, it's an unusual lot, there's actually two front, two fronts to this house. There's a front where, where is the front, and then there's also another street that's behind it. So it's like two fronts on two different sides. It's not a corner lot, it's just two fronts on two different sides. So what we need to do is, um, seek a variance for front, for the front yard setback, because anything that we do to the house would need, require a variance. I was wondering if you could pull up the site. So we're not expanding the footprint, we're just gonna be building on top of the existing house. So, um, that still requires a variance, and, um, they're very minor additions, they're less than 250 square feet. Ones, and they're both, like I said, above, um, you can see there on the site plan. Ones, and they're both, like I said, above, um, you can see there on the site plan. They're both above the existing footprint. So you can see north on the page, that's uh Bag Drive, that's your first front. And just below it, if you could pan down a little bit more, uh, you can see Martha Place is um on the other side, and that's another front. So um, the hatched areas on the site plan are, we're building as additions, and they're on top of the existing footprint. It's a second floor addition.
So you will not be adding to the footprint of the house?
Yeah.
Your existing is existing, okay.
Those are two areas that are um s- single stories that we're gonna be adding a second story.
Right.
A much needed second bathroom and a um, a bigger bedroom for one of the kids.
Okay.
And the reason for the two variances is because it's Bag Drive and Martha Place?
Yeah. Both fronts. Kind of an unusual lot. I'm used to dealing with a corner lot, but nothing like this where there's two, two different fronts.
Okay. Any other comments from the board? Is there anyone in the room that would like to make a comment on this application or anyone on Zoom?
No hands are raised.
No hands are raised, okay. This is pretty simple. Okay, I'll make a motion, we close the public hearing.
I second the motion.
Chairman Giordina?
Hi.
Howard Dubs?
Hi.
Mike Nolan?
Hi.
Ron Jenzik?
Hi.
Warren Gottlieb?
Hi.
I can make a motion.
Thank you, Mike.
I move a variance to uh Dan and Dave House for a separate two-story addition. Um, it's a legal non-conforming home on a quarter acre district. Um, they are not expanding the footprint of the home. Um, they are adding a second bath and increasing the size, uh, size of the one bedroom. Um, the difficult part of this application is that they have two front yards requiring two variances uh on two different roads. Uh, the first variance would be a twelve-foot front yard variance um on the big roadside. And the second would be a twenty-eight-foot front yard setback on Martha Place. Is that correct?
Yep, you got that.
And for the following reasons, the granting of the variance will not create an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. Uh, the benefits sought by the applicants cannot be achieved by any other feasible method and not expanding the footprint of the home. Uh, the requested area, the requested variance is while substantial, uh, it is legal non-conforming. Um, it will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical environment conditions in the neighborhood. Uh, there are no neighbors who are present or written um in opposition to the variance. Um, it is not self-created in the respect that um the uh, again, the uh building lot is legal non-conforming and they're not adding to it. With that, we need six months to start. Uh, you're to finish, Tom, in terms of a survey, Tom?
No, sir.
Okay.
It's built on top of the original structure. There is no footprint extension.
Okay. I'll second that.
So it's six months to start, yeah.
Six months to start, one year to finish, right?
Right, yep.
I'll second it.
Chairman Giordina?
Hi.
Howard Dubs?
Hi.
Mike Nolan?
Hi.
Ron Jenzik?
Hi.
Warren Gottlieb?
Hi.
You have your variance, good luck.
Thank you for your time, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next applicant is Barg.
Uh, good evening, uh, members of the chairman and members of the uh, of the zoning board. Um, I'm Derek Aaron, I'm the land and ski architect of the project. Um, and uh, just gonna try to share my screen. And this is a project that the zoning board saw uh three years ago. Can my screen come up?
No. Here it is.
Okay now?
You're on, good, thank you.
Okay. So, uh, this is Barg nine thirty-one, Hard Travel Road. And November of twenty twenty, we were before the board and we requested uh, a variance, two variances for the project. This project is a, it's a one acre zone, but the lots, um, about two point one seven acres. And the lot is kind of, um, it, it, it's a, it's a, it's an odd lot because it's got a wetland in the front, a peony tree. And, and you get that farther into the property, that's where the house is, and it kind of goes up and you got kind of a rocky high point here. That's when they built the house. The house was built, I think, in the twenties. Uh, before uh there was a zoning regulation, so it was, it was pushed back. You can see, and then it drops down, there's a water course running right through here. And it kind of overlooks, I, I suspect they built the house to overlook the water course. So as a result of that, when we started doing the planning for this, in the existing condition, the property is compliant, there was a previous variance granted for this garage sometime, I don't know, maybe twenty years ago or so. The house you can see goes over the setback line, but again, the house created zoning. It was just theirs, so I guess that's one of those non-legal, non-compliant uh situations. But when we built the pool, we found out, so because of this driveway, it's over four hundred feet long, it brings the development coverage for the property way up. And when we added the pool into it, we went over, so we needed a deal and various. Um, the other, the other variance we need is the, because the pool, there's no place on the property, as I say, here's the house here, and it drops right off to this thing here, there's no place else to put the pool. You've got a, you've got a wetland here, you've got a hundred foot wetland setback right here. So we've been through the, through the ERB, we, we've obtained the wetland permits to work in, in this area. And um, so if you put the pool in the front yard, you have to triple the front yard setback, which you have a sixty-foot normal setback, and if the pool's in the front yard, you have to triple it, and we did, one eighty, we don't have a problem with that. But what we do have a problem with is that we are over on the coverage. And what happened last time, and what's, what's happened is we're, we're, we're actually asking for lesser variances this time. This was where the pool was last time. Just going back, you know, in twenty twenty, this is what the board saw in twenty twenty. And this was the pool, you can see the pool was riding that hundred foot setback line right there. And then we were over it, and now, uh, and you know, and now there's that hundred foot setback, we've let everything on the inside of it, so. Actually, we are asking for I think the maximum allowable thirteen thousand, thirteen thousand, oh, thirteen thousand change, we're asking for fourteen thousand five hundred and forty four square. Asking for a variance of nine hundred and ten square feet. Um, and we'd just like to point out that the last time we were there, we asked for a variance of about four hundred square feet more than this, and it was granted at that time. So I apologize for having to come back and put the zoning board through this again, and what happened was the, the, the variance was granted, and it was right about the COVID time hit. And we went out to bid, you couldn't even get contractors to get back with, when prices were, the prices were exorbitant. So the project went on hold, but I didn't, what I didn't, I always, I always thought that variances ran with the land, and I guess they do, but I, this variance was conditioned on pulling the building permit, I think, within six months, and that didn't happen. So they hired a contractor this year, he went to uh the building department, asked for the variance, and the, asked for the building permit, and of course it was denied because the variance had expired. Unbeknownst to me, so that's why we're back here today. So we're asking for the same variance, the, the variance of that, you know, the the other caveat to this three foot, three times the front yard, you have to have three times the, the lot area. So you need a one acre zone, you need three acres, we've got two point two or so. So that's why we're asking for the, for the variance. That hasn't changed from last time. That's the same variance from last time because the lot area hasn't changed and the regulations haven't changed. We are asking for the, for the covered variance, and again, the covered variance we're asking for is actually four hundred square feet less than the last time we were, we were before the board. So that, that's the project in a nutshell, it's a reduced, it's a reduced scope project. And uh, so we would ask that, that the board reconsider, um, based, you know, based on looking at the, at the extract of the minutes from the last meeting in twenty twenty. And um, you know, the, the zoning board finds, and you know, the, we talked about, that the house is far back and no backyard, no place else to go, we just secluded, it's very, there's no use in and out of the site, so the board determined that there would be no undesirable changes in the neighborhood. Um, the board had determined that there would be no adverse impact or physical on the environmental conditions of the neighborhood. They've been through the ERB, and we, we have comprehensive road control plans and planning evaluation plan. We're converting mold lawn and the wetland to plant, and so the ERB was very pleased with the application. Um, for the board found that the variance was not self-created hardship because of the location of the house and the size of the property. And by the board, um, found that the variances are not substantial, so given that we're asking for a little bit less this time, we respectfully ask that the board reapprove of this variance.
Why is the pool moved, is being moved from the last variance?
Well, when the owners got the pricing back, you know, the, the whole world changed, obviously, when COVID hit, all the materials skyrocketed. And um, the price was, you know, the price was much more than they thought. Um, they realized they didn't need it, it was bigger pool, again, this was the size of the pool before. And they realized that they can, they'd be happy just with a smaller pool, and so that's what they did, they went to a smaller, they went to a smaller pool, I think it's a twelve by twenty, I think now. And smaller paddies, again, this was the size of the pool before, so they, you know, they almost cut, cut the pool in half. And they consider it more of a, more of a dipping pool type thing where, you know, we're gonna come off, we're gonna raise it up a little bit, it's gonna look like a large spa. And uh, it's just gonna be nestled right in there, it's gonna be nestled right in front of this, uh, right, right in this area here. Right in the grass, and uh, we'll have a little water spa coming out of the building to make it kind of look like a little, uh, you know, like a little villa type thing.
Any other comments from the board? No. Anybody in the room that would like to address this application or anybody on Zoom?
Uh, I'd also just like to add, it was determined that the last time we were before the board, the variance was granted, the the pool was two hundred feet or so to the uh, to the front property line, and now it's like two, it's like eight feet farther away, so it's not only is the, is, is the coverage asking for less, but the pool is farther away from the front yard.
Thank you. No other comments? I'll move, we close the public hearing.
I second the motion.
Chairman Giordina?
Hi.
Howard Dubs?
Hi.
Mike Nolan?
Hi.
Ron Jenzik?
Hi.
Warren Gottlieb?
Hi.
I'll make a motion at the uh, Barg, Barg application uh, to build a swimming pool. Requiring a uh a variance of nine hundred and ten square feet for development coverage and a variance of uh point eight two four acres uh for the uh pool being located in the front yard, where three acres are required, and they only have two point one seven six acres. I'll move that we approve this variance for the following reasons. Uh, this application has been before us, uh, just before the COVID situation hit us. Uh, and it was approved by this board. Uh, since then, nothing has happened, and they, their variance time ran out, and they have reapplied. But during the reapplying process, they've decided to make some changes, which were positive. They have reduced the uh coverage requirement so that our new variance will be less coverage than the previously granted variance. The, the property's question is very unique in that it sits way farther back off the road than most properties of this size uh with an extremely long driveway creating a coverage situation that is not normal. Um, the uh the, the project is not even visible from the road, so even though it is not, they don't have the required three acres, they only have a little less than that. Um, it will not seriously or detrimentally impact the uh visibility or the, or the neighborhood. The required variances are uh not substantial, given the fact of uh the situation, the size of the property, and the uh, the proposed work to be done. Uh, the granting of the variance will not create an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood. Um, there are no other ways to achieve the desired benefit other than granting this variance. There will be no adverse effect on the uh physical environment uh in the neighborhood. Uh, this is not a really, not a self-created hardship in that their property is, is extremely unique with the setting of the, of the uh building and the wetlands on it and the uh constricted, restricted areas where they are, have anything, any way to build anything on this property. And if you can provide us with uh foundation surveys prior to framing, and one thing I do request normally when we're doing swimming pools, uh, if it's at a gunite pool, and I'm assuming that it is, that before the gunite is shot, we need a survey of the uh, of the excavation and the rebar, to be sure it's in the right place. Because we would not want to have, we do not want to have you taken out.
Once the wood forming is up and the steel is in place and everything's been inspected, we'll have it, we'll have it. An interim survey done and submitted to the building.
Exactly, right, right.
Or we should agree.
We, we've learned from experience that when we don't do that and somebody makes an error, it's hardship for everybody involved. So it's better for you to get us a survey, show us that it's in the right place, and then continue with your project. You'll have six months to start and one year to finish. Is that gonna be okay for you timewise?
You know, it's kind of a sore point for me over here, so.
And if you could remember next time, in case you need a little extension, as you saw this evening, we painted three of them. We could, we could help you out if necessary, and if you have a reasonable reason to have it done.
So.
So we'll give you six, six months to start and one year to finish.
Well, you know, they, okay, so they retain the pool company. And the pool companies file, and obviously they filed for the building permit, so, okay, so here it's January, six months to start. What if the pool company is busy and they don't start August?
Well, then you're gonna have a problem. You're gonna have to come back to us because I think six months is a reasonable time, we, we do it all the time, it's never, or I should say never, very seldom a problem.
They can start before June.
But I, I, I would posit, Mr. Chairman, that pool companies can't start working until April, so that's four months right there.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not so sure about that April thing nowadays with global warming. We don't even have, we don't even have frost in the ground. I, I'm an old construction guy, I've been around a long, long time.
Okay, we got a hot water table.
I've seen, I've seen frost, wait a minute, I've seen frost driven three feet in the ground. We haven't had frost in the last five years.
I know.
They're excavating in December. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna insist on six months to start and one year to finish. If for some reason you can't, then come to us with a reasonable reason why, and I'm sure we'll be happy to accommodate you.
I second the motion.
Chairman Giordina?
Hi.
Howard Dubs?
Hi.
Mike Nolan?
Hi.
Ron Jenzik?
Hi.
Warren Gottlieb?
Hi.
You have your variance, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good night.
Good night.
Um, Paul Bernard?
Beijing.
Beijing Kai. Go ahead.
Could you state your name for us, please, and what is that you seek?
Yeah.
Paula Bernard.
And Andre Bernard.
Okay, you are seeking?
We want to get a deck.
A side setback variance, so we can put the steps for our deck on the side. Because the present, where it was originally planned for, doesn't work.
Are there steps there now that you have to take?
There are no steps there now. There were steps.
Okay.
They were taken away, and they were gonna put in the new steps, no good.
Why doesn't it work?
Um, it's, there's a beam that goes down that's holding up the deck. And you would have, the steps would be very narrow, they could only be like two feet wide, and I know that's not compliance. That's at least thirty-six inches.
Good reason. Any other comments from the board?
No.
Anybody in the audience or on Zoom that would like to interest this application? Anybody online there?
No hands are raised.
No hands are raised, okay. I don't have any questions about this either. I'll move, we close the public hearing.
I second the motion.
Chairman Giordina?
Hi.
Howard Dubs?
Hi.
Mike Nolan?
Hi.
Ron Jenzik?
Hi.
Warren Gottlieb?
Hi.
I'll make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, um.
I was less. I always laugh for her.
For the Paula Esperonard, I guess it's a trust, granting a 14-foot side yard variance to construct a staircase from an existing deck. The granting of this variance will not create an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. As was stated, to put the staircase back, it would be narrow and wouldn't not be compliant. Therefore, there's no feasible method other than the variance to achieve the benefit. I don't believe the variance is substantial. And although self-created, it's de minimis because we're just changing the staircase to another location. So for those reasons, I move that we grant the variance for the relocation of the staircase. You need a survey? And final survey, once it's.
Has built.
Has built.
Has built.
Six months to start.
Six months to start, one year to finish.
Thank you very much. Want to wish everybody a happy and healthy holiday.
We didn't vote yet. Not that easy.
You go either way.
Still, I want to wish you a happy, healthy holiday.
Can I get a second on that, please?
Chairman Giordina.
Aye.
Howard Dubs.
Aye.
Mike Nolan.
Aye.
Ron Jenzeg.
Aye.
Warren Gottlieb.
Aye.
You have your variants, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And last but not least, Tavo Development LLC.
Good evening, board members. Mr. Paul. My name is Teo Siguenza. I am the architect for Mr. Tavolachi. Who is going to join us in here, he's going to help me hold the vault. If you don't mind, I want to see here. I take this one, which is the servant here. So the, I suppose you have the board in there as well. We are looking at the, the property here, which is about 0.7 acres. You know, half acre property. So it complies as far as the, the area of the property complies as far as the coverage. But as you can see here, you know, the buildable area, it's quite diminished here. And the existing house actually is outside of the setback line. We are looking to rebuild this home, save the existing foundation, and raise a story on top of it. So we will rebuild the first floor, rebuild the second floor. Generally, the, the house, of course, because we're using foundation, it stays in the same footprint with the exception of the garage that we're looking to push a little bit towards the north and a little bit towards the street, but never farther than the line of the, of the house. If you can see here, I'll probably get it closer to you here. So this is why we're here tonight, you know, to, to request a variance for, for the front yard. As, as you can see here clearly, you know, the house existing is here, which, which remains. And the proposal is actually to, to continue out in the same line. The garage is currently here. We, we have a high hill in here. There's a lot of topography change in the back. So it's challenging as far as going to the back. There's really no, no room unless we start, you know, cutting, you know, half of that hill in this area. So naturally, the, the obvious way to expand this garage would be to, to come to the front. And again, we're trying to keep in the line so that we don't expand any farther.
Okay, you get it.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any comments from the board? On this one?
Uh, no.
This is Planet Old House.
Yes.
You guys are taking on a project.
Yes.
So you have any of the neighbors approached you on this?
Everybody's been fine. Neighbor to the, to the, to the left, we actually gave him some wood. We cut some trees, and he wanted some wood for firewood. So he took it, went to firewood. I think everybody's excited. I think the house has been in disrepair for a number of years. There's a blue tarp on it for years that Tom tried to have removed. He was successful, actually.
Is this a new town?
Yes.
By the duck pond.
By the duck pond.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
This is an ancient house.
So we want to, we want to build something, you know, nice for the community. And it'll be a nice walk to town, the train is there. It should be really.
I know the house, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
I'm happy to see it being finally upgraded and improved.
Yeah.
I commend you for the project that you're on.
I walk by your house two times a day with my dog.
Is that right?
Very familiar with it?
Yes.
My second dog, so it's been 17 years.
Took down a lot of trees.
Yeah. I mean, they were over that house, like, maybe this last storm, if we didn't, you know, who knows?
Yeah, okay. Okay, is there anybody, and obviously nobody in the room. Is there anybody on Zoom that would like to address this application?
No hands are raised.
No hands are raised. Anybody on the board have any other comments to make? No other comments to make, okay. I'll move we close the public hearing.
I second the motion.
Chairman Giordina.
Aye.
Howard Dubs.
Aye.
Mike Nolan.
Aye.
Ron Jenzeg.
Aye.
Warren Gottlieb.
Aye.
Okay, we need a motion. You can do it, I'm not going to do it.
God's strong. Yeah. With respect to the application of Tavo Development, I move that we grant the variances. So we're looking at a front yard of 19 feet for the garage, a first floor expansion of 20 feet front yard, a second floor expansion of 20 feet front yard, and a parking area variance of 19 feet front yard. This is a very old house. It's in disrepair. So the granting of this variance will not, will not create an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties. In fact, it'll enhance nearby properties. There is no feasible method other than the variance to achieve the benefit to renovate this property. The variances are not substantial, but, but necessary. And the granting of the variance will have no adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood. You have six months to start, one year to finish, and we need surveys once completed.
Great. Thank you.
No, we didn't vote yet. Again, it can go.
Can we get a second, please?
Thank you for the six months.
I second the motion.
Michael second it.
Chairman Giordina.
Aye.
Howard Dubs.
Aye.
Mike Nolan.
Aye.
Ron Jenzeg.
Aye.
Warren Gottlieb.
Aye.
You have your variants.
Thank you very much. Happy holidays.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, we have.
Good night, board members. Good night.
Good night.
Mr. Paul, good night. Good night.
November 29th, 30 minutes for approval. I move that we approve the minutes.
I second the motion.
Chairman Giordina.
Aye.
Howard Dubs.
Aye.
Mike Nolan.
Aye.
Ron Jenzeg.
Aye.
Warren Gottlieb.
Aye.
German is in order, and I wish all in the room and listening to us a happy holiday and a healthy and prosperous New Year for all. Good night.